They showed our doctor bills out?
No. Okay, we are going to go ahead and begin our city council meeting for April 24th, 2023, and we will begin with roll call, please.
Walters?
Here.
DeBorak?
Here.
Sarchet?
Here.
Vogel?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Item three, approval of agenda. I'll ask for a motion in a second.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Item four is a presentation from our tree board and Arbor League rep Ken Morse, representing Tree City USA Awards. Hi, Ken.
This is Phil Jensen. He's my right-hand man on the Arbor for 30 years. Go ahead and do that, Phil. I already knew. So much of us. My name is Ken Morse. I'm the chairperson of the Polk City Arbor League. Since my last report a year ago, I'm going to repeat this. Since my last report a year ago, Polk City Arbor League secured funding to plant five trees at Woodhaven Gas Line Park, a very cool buckeye tree at Lakeside Park on Parker Boulevard, as well as our annual Arbor Day tree at Rock Park behind West Elementary School. Thank you goes out to Parks and Rec Director Jason Tran for keeping all those trees watered for us because we brought how to label to do it. These were in part funded by the Mid American Energy Trees Please grant program. We just recently were notified that we received another grant from Mid American Energy to fund this year's program, and a big thank you goes out to Mid American Energy for all of their years of support. If you know anybody, the executives of Mid American, you know, thank them for this. We've gotten money from Mid American for 30 years, every year. It's added up to be a lot of money. It's a really great program. It's a matching grant. But anyway, we've got a lot of money from Mid American, and we appreciate their support. Polk City Arbor League continues to do the maintenance on all of the trees that we planted over the past 35 years or so. Phil and I attended the 67th Annual Shade Trees Short Course for two days in February to learn a bunch of stuff about trees. Now, on to, let's move to my next page, on to Tree City USA. Phil and I attended the Urban and Community Forestry Tree Awards Luncheon April 12th in Ankeny. This is the Tree City Luncheon. Jason Tran, Phil and myself attended to represent Polk City. Two of the requirements for Tree City USA are to have a local tree board and an official proclamation of Arbor Day. Thank you to Mayor Carstens for the official proclamation of Arbor Day. Arbor Day is always the last Friday in April, and I would encourage everyone to plant a tree for Arbor Day. One of the factoids at the luncheon was over 7 million trees were lost in Iowa in the 2020 derage. Oh, 7 million trees in Iowa in 2020. So again, I go back to the last Friday in April is Arbor Day, and I would encourage you to plant a tree. Next is a couple of door prizes. According to Chelsea, there are 934 communities in Iowa. The first door prize goes to, who can tell me how many Tree City communities there are in Iowa? 934 communities. How many of those are Tree City USA communities? Closest guess is the first. 934 is the number of communities.
75. 76.
I'll take the other.
We're playing a game.
And we know every year. We should be better prepared.
Keep going, because we haven't hit it yet.
113.
74 is the correct number. I even must have studied last year's notes. And for that, you get this prize brochure, 10 top ways to grow your canopy.
Thank you.
Wait a minute, I should get that.
I thought that too. I was hoping you'd win. Okay, the next prize for this, third prize, this is precious, Trees Are the Answer. And the question is, of those 74 communities, how many Tree City communities in Iowa got the Growth Award?
We obviously got it.
That's, that's, is your guess one? Anyone else want to make a guess?
22.
I'm sorry?
22.
Hey, anybody else?
34.
Anybody else? The answer is 20. Trees are the answer. The answer is trees are the answer. So that's that. Okay. Polk City has received the Tree City USA recognition for 30 years straight and the Growth Award for 28 of those 30 years. And again, 28 years out of 30, we've gotten, and there's only 20 communities in Iowa that got the she- or so. Polk City is a standout community in regards to Tree City USA and growth. Now, on to the stickers and the awards and all the goodies that we get. And this year, we have this beautiful plaque, 30 years of Tree City USA. Pretty spectacular. For that, I'm sure we'll go to sit off. I'll give that to the mayor, put it wherever you want. 30 years, Tree City USA. That's a big deal. Tree City USA Growth Award. Presentation or whatever, certificate. And the, you leave the goes on plaque back there, and we get one more year on that, and then we'll get another, another tag on that too. 30 years of Tree City USA. The new stickers that are yellow instead of white, we fill out. I will take the responsibility for getting those put up. Here is the little Growth Award sticker that goes to Jenny, because that goes to that other plaque. And 28 years of Growth Award. We'll put those stickers up. I will give the flag to Jason Tran. There's actually a relatively new flag out there. They've gone to every other year, and Jason placed it last year. So we'll probably hang on to this and maybe put it up for the holiday weekend here, festive weekend, and take care of the rest of the stickers. And that's the end of my presentation. Any questions?
Ken, if you would, I'd like for you to explain what it is that qualifies you to be a Tree City USA, and it's not just planting trees. The other criteria that-
There are numerous criteria, having a tree board, having a line item budget, tree line item budget, Arbor Day proclamation, doing an Arbor Day celebration every year. Jason Tran has taken over the responsibility for filling out the paperwork and application on the Tree City USA. Jason, what other requirements are there?
Well, there's like communication piece, outreach, you know, the thing that the Arbor League does at West Elementary every year, checks a lot of boxes, you know, so.
That's, that's what I was wanting to hear, the education part of it.
Plant trees for kids. And, and our mission statement in the Arbor League, and I can't quote exactly, but is the effective is to plant trees and nurture the Arbor, Arbor culture in Polk City, generations of children. So that's why I plant trees. I think they're-
Yeah, sure. Sorry, I've learned those.
You're so excited we had that.
I did. Soon as I won, it was like, you know, you've been, you've been, how many trees do you think you've planted over the-
You know, David, we, I, I can just say hundreds, and I really don't have a good number on it, but it's gotta be 500. I don't know. I lose track. There are so many places that-
I need a paramedic.
We just lost track.
Sorry.
Go ahead. But the sports complex was our very first planting. We, we have planted nearly every tree in nearly every park in the city with the exception of the square maybe. But the sports complex, Kiwanis Park, Miller Park, and a lot of those are gone. The park down here at the end of Broadway at Deer Haven, 12 Oaks Park, the Rock Park, the Gas Line Park on Parker Boulevard, Linear Park, the Lakeside Park on Parker. I'm just trying to think off top of my head. But we've had our hands on or planted virtually every tree in every park.
Dozens of the elementarys.
Yeah, yeah.
Dozens.
Yeah, that's just what I-
Well, and that speaks volumes. And you and Phil, I think the approach from anybody that just wants to do good and doesn't keep track of things and doesn't look for attention and to do it for 30 years is, is pretty cool. So, and I'm glad too, Jenny, make sure you get in the minutes. We talked before the meeting, and he said this was not going to be his last meeting, so make sure that that's duly noted. See, that's confirmation. But no, seriously, you guys have, I mean, find somebody anywhere that has done more than you guys have. And thank you. And very happy to have learned what I've learned from you and benefit from all the things that you've done.
Thank you, Rob. I would just, it's a labor of love. Phil, like myself, is a tree hager at heart. Do it for the best of the community, and it's got nothing to do about self-serving. It's for kids, it's for the community, and it's a labor of love. Thank you.
Thank you. We've got one of the kids that loves your work here. My, I've said before, my son, and I gave him the option of coming tonight. I said, the tree guy's coming to talk to us tonight. He was interested in coming. So that's one of the kids that appreciates all of your work. He loves trees too. So thank you. And again, you heard it, right, Tyson? He plants trees for you. That's pretty cool.
It's for the kids. By the time, by the time the shade's there, I won't.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ken.
You're welcome.
And Phil, appreciate it very much.
You're welcome.
So we then move on to item number five, public comments. This is the time and place for comments for any item other than those that public hearing. If you wish to speak, we should have contacted Jenny by now. Do we have anyone wishing to speak?
Yes, sir. Ken Morse.
I'd like to speak.
Right on up.
Thank you.
My name's, excuse me, my name's Ken Morse, 1308 West Side Drive. I'd like to address the council regarding, I think I've got this right, ordinance number 2023-5000. I think that's the correct. This is regarding the limitation of 4,000 square foot total, total of structures in any residential neighborhood specifically. Total maximum size of all accessory structures shall not exceed 4,000 square feet in any residential district. The letter dated 4/21 from Snyder Associates states, quote, "The addition of a maximum total square footage of 4,000 square feet will be most impactful on lots over one acre in size." This is discrimination on people that have got over one acre in size. It's not fair to the owners of the property. I've got an acreage. I pay taxes on all of the square footage of the property. People that buy land, buy land to be able to use it, and this is an unnecessarily restrictive restriction on lots over one acre. The 30% rule would be more equitable. I, my acreage out there, there's a barn there, and there's a house there, and I had every intention to build a garage up by the house. This restriction, I can't do that. The barn is already there, and it's a big barn. I don't believe 4,000 square feet of building space that applies to a quarter of an acre or half an acre should apply to anything over one acre. If you've got two acres, three acres, five acres, where do you draw the line? I think that's unnecessarily restrictive on anybody who's got acres. And unless you own an acreage, you probably didn't see that in that, in that ordinance. But I would request a rethink that, because it's not fair to anybody in excess of one acre in this.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we'll move on then to item number six, consent items, and I'll ask for a motion in a second, please.
Motion to approve, Senator?
Second.
And roll call.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
So we'll move on to seven business items. A is Resolution 2023-56, approving the site plan on With Life. I understand On With Life representative is here tonight.
Hi, Mickey Neil with Civil Design Advantage, 4120 foot, Northwest Urbandale Drive. So I am here, I'm the civil engineer for On With Life. We also have On With Life here if you have any specific questions as well. But pretty straightforward site plan in front of you here at 1002 West Washington Street. Total site is approximately 3.4 acres. An existing one-story, approximately a little bit over 20,000 square foot installation skilled nursing facility that they're looking at renovating. With that renovation, there's just some general site updates that they will be doing with that. When it comes to sanitary sewer, currently not an existing grease interceptor. So we'll be pulling sanitary through the east, east drive around to the back. And then so with that, that will be removal and replacement of that pavement to make that happen. Some general, just paving updates to the site when it comes to the parking, re-stripping our parking stalls. New water is right now anticipated to be pulled into the building. Existing building is sprinkled. We're just not really quite sure if it's actually sprinkled to today's code. So proposing to pull that water service in to re-sprinkle appropriately. Patio will be going, certain existing patio kind of tucked around the back. They'll be extending on that with a small loop for the time being, replacing fencing there as well, and then putting in an actual trash enclosure to the east of that existing garage space on the backside of that property. No proposed, proposed changes to storm sewer. You have no objections to staff comments. Let's answer any questions.
No, no questions for me. I, I will just add, for you gentlemen with On With Life, direct history. Okay, I didn't know. So you don't need to get up. I was just gonna say I was obviously concerned when the nursing home changed hands like it did and didn't even have a thought that an organization like On With Life could come in with the jobs and what you guys do. So best case scenario, in my opinion, assuming everything checked off from this renovation, but just wanted to acknowledge that. Excited to have you in the community and already having, I think, two or three people volunteering in the community with the festival says a lot. So enthusiastic thumbs up from my perspective. Welcome to town.
And I know they're very excited to be in the community, and they make it a big part of this. This is a lot of their forever home. So they want us to be there as well.
If anybody is interested, I watched a great story over the weekend on Channel 8 about the pork farmer who got hit by the motorcycle and ended up in your On With Life facility in Ankeny and how he's recovered. Now, I know ours is a little different from that because ours is long-term, but it's still a beautiful story, and it says an awful lot about what On With Life does.
I don't see any negatives involved with this. I think it would be a great addition to our community, I think.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-56.
And a second then?
Second.
And we'll roll, roll call, please.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Item B, Resolution 2023-57, rescinding Resolution 2022-108, that awarded construction contract for the West Bridge Road Water Main Loop Project and accepting the new proposal in the amount of $74,771 from the Underground Company Limited to complete the work. So I'll ask for a motion and a second, please. Oh, you know what? We have Travis, you want to talk on this?
Yes. So for your consideration tonight is another step in a very small project. Back in 2022, we publicly bid the project. We had six bidders at that time. Elder was the apparent low bidder. We awarded the contract. Due to unforeseen utility coordination and conflicts, that process leaked into the winter. Elder gave every effort this year to try and get it in the ground for you. Between the late winter and prices going up, they've asked to be released from their bond. So as a result of the estimated costs, or estimated cost for the project, Iowa law allows you to seek bids for vertical infrastructure in the amount of less than $81,000. So the contractor on Crossroads at Lake Platt III, the Underground Company, is in town. We asked them for a proposal, and by awarding, rescinding the previous contract and awarding this new contract, the city will actually come out right around $4,500 ahead.
Okay. So now I'll ask for a motion in a second, please.
Someone?
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moving on to C, Resolution 2023-59, approving plat of survey for parcel 2023-53 and record of lot tie agreement. Travis, you're up again?
Yes. So for your consideration tonight is a plot of survey that would create an unbuildable lot that would then be tied to another lot. These are, the two existing lots in question are out on North Side Drive, south of North Side Drive and east of the creek. They're both owned in some form or fashion by Orbital H Mac and Iowa Mac. One's a corporation, one is in their name. Essentially, what this plot of survey does is it splits an 800, or 185-foot strip from the east parcel and ties it to the west parcel. Their intent right now is to sell those two combined, or the two resulting parcels to two separate developers. The record of lot tie will ensure that there is no possibility of that 185-foot strip causing further complications to further development in that area and makes it clean. This does form an unbuildable pla, or parcel, so they would still have to come back with a final plat and construction drawing, or preliminary plat and construction drawings prior to putting any improvements in.
Thank you, Travis. So we'll ask for a motion and a second? Got them both there, didn't we?
Some of them.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Item D, first reading of ordinance 2023-7000, adding Chapter 11 Rag Ride. Chelsea, you're going to comment on this?
Yes, I am. For the council's consideration this evening, is a proposed ordinance relating to Rag Ride passing through Polk City on Wednesday, July 26, 2023. The ordinance outlines the following regulations: vendor regulations and fees, street closures, and alcohol consumption spaces. Amy Beatty, city attorney, has reviewed the ordinance, and she's proposing that we do make an adjustment to paragraph nine under vendors. So section 11.02, paragraph nine, violations, that first sentence would end at $750. We would not have a, any jail time associated with, with that regulation. So I would ask the council to approve it with that provision.
Okay. So we'll ask for a motion and a second.
Someone?
Well, I should say a motion and a second, approving with that adjustment.
Thanks for that.
And did we get a second?
I second exactly what Maggie said.
Okay. And then we will have a roll call on that, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
But D1 is the option to waive the second and third readings. I'll, I'll ask for a motion in a second.
Someone?
Sorry.
Any discussion of that?
I think it's probably fair. We don't like to necessarily waive the second, third readings, but in this instance, it's, doesn't, it's a formality, if you will. It doesn't have public input or anything. So that's why we do it for something like this.
Roll call then?
DeBorak?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Moving on to E then, first reading of ordinance 2023-8000, consolidating the current U1 to GF zoning districts into a new GF1 zoning district. Travis?
So for your consideration tonight, we are going to rename the U1 district and then combine it existing GF district to create a GF1 district and name it Government Facilities Zoning District. In our mind, it cleans up the naming conventions and makes it a little clearer what we're trying to accomplish, as well as eliminates an unused district. The history for you guys, the mayor may not know. The GF zoning district was created when the backwaters of the Barrier Dam were annexed into Polk City. Cor had a fear that the city was going to somehow place restrictions onto their land and wanted a dedicated district that essentially said the city has no for, as a district. They didn't end up zoning over it, probably because somebody minded them that the city can't regulate the federal government. But-
Or they just changed their mind because that's what they-
That is also fair assessment. But so as part of this district, really the biggest thing that it changes from the U1 regulations is that U1 regulations currently have a 50-foot setback in all yards. What we have done as part of this GF1 district renaming and rework is to essentially set it so that wherever that government facility is located in town, it matches the neighborhood's character. So for the new city hall, for instance, the required setback would be zero because it's in the, it's adjoining the CTS district. It fits the character of the square to be right on the back walk. Whereas something like the library is in a more residential area. So if you were to build a government facility similar to that in a residential area, we would set those setbacks equal to homes in the area, or the commercial lots, or so on and so forth. So it kind of gives you that flexibility to have your government facilities make sense in the neighborhoods they're at, while still making it clear that it is a government facility.
Okay. So we will ask for a motion in a second, please.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call then?
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBorak?
Sarchet?
Yes.
Item E1 is the option to waive the second and third readings, and I'll ask for a motion in a second.
On this one, so we, it is included the city hall land.
Yes. So anything currently in the U1 district, the way that this ordinance is set up will essentially be renamed-
Right.
-to the GF1 district without reason.
So to me, this is largely cleanup. I do get concerned about the perception, having very recently rezoned that to U1 and now changing it to GF. I can't imagine what substantive pushback there would be, but nonetheless, fast-tracking this does maybe not look great. So that's where, to your point, the last one, is there any reason? That's what I was getting at. Does this, with the construction going on, or there is a reason that not doing the second and third reading today would slow anything down?
No, it's a cleanup matter.
Yep. Really, the only thing right now that would be impacted would be certificate of occupancy, which unfortunately, you are quite away from.
Well, I'd be a hypocrite if I wasn't saying, let's redig, that lack of motion just for your point, for the sake of what you just said. That's right, man. Other people think differently. It's the same.
So do we have a motion? Dies from a lack of emotion. Moving on to F, second reading of ordinance 2023-5000, amending Chapter 165.06, zoning regulations, general regulations. Travis, you're up.
So for your consideration tonight is the second reading of an ordinance we discussed two weeks ago. Essentially, what we're proposing is a blanket 4,000-foot, square foot maximum on accessory buildings. That would be a combined accessory structure total. That 4,000 square foot is equivalent to over nine two-car garages, just to kind of be an idea of magnitude of that cap. And then there's also, as part of this amendment, we were talking about adding a maximum height of 30 feet in all residential districts. One clarification from the last meeting was we coordinated further with safe buildings, who does your, your building site plan views and enforcement, or inspections. And it is- And it is their opinion that the sixteen-foot average height that your code currently has will have, will almost always govern. There are, they said you could get really, really creative in the way your building looks, but for most of these large structures, folks are wanting them in more recreational vehicles. And so they're looking for a ten to twelve-foot overhead door. For a ten to twelve-foot sidewall, your peak can only max out at twenty or twenty-two feet and still hit that average height requirement. So we could make a modification to lower that maximum if that's how you desire it. That kind of gives you a rundown, a little bit of a cleanup discussion from last night.
Okay, so I'll ask for a motion and a second.
Look, my feelings on this, and I'm the guy that poked the hornet's nest, and I feel bad about it. Fortunately, constituents had a lot more head than I did. And we, I think we need to take our time on this and make sure we get it right, make sure everybody understands what's happening. And if it doesn't happen tonight, so be it. Those are my feelings. If anybody agrees with that.
Well, since our last, since doing a little bit more investigation, talking to some people, sorry, guys, I know it looks dumb, but I don't, I don't, I feel like we need to honestly, like Ron said, just take our, take a step back and understand who it may impact as we move forward and not just put a blanket over it because there is exceptions to every rule. I don't believe, it's hard for me to say, don't build a building X-large at, at this place, at this time, for this reason. I don't want to do that. So I do want to take a step back. I want to understand how it would affect certain people and then maybe have then some, be the right word, a way to bring forth a case in the future if that, exceptions, I guess. So, you know, how can we make this work for certain people and not put them out because of it? So I don't, you're on, I, I think we need to hold this back a bit.
I don't know what that'll look like, and I really appreciate emails that you guys were involved with and got my, I read it at least three times today. I'm just confused as I was last week, I get, or two weeks. I would just like to go slowly on this.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve F?
Before we make a motion, if we, if it dies, what's the?
Yeah, I, my suggestion would be that if you're going to, that you, the better way to handle it, if you want to continue the discussion of this particular ordinance, is just a motion to table the, the, the next reading of the ordinance. Then you've got, then it just stays there until such time as you're ready to bring it back and bring that ordinance back up.
Well, can I ask a question? So from, not speaking for anybody else, but my concern probably can't be overcome by the verbiage that's in here. So I, if, if we want to, and maybe this is where both of you are going, I don't know. I'm not trying to put words in anybody's mouth, but we want to revisit the issue. But for me, I don't think revisiting the issue and, and coming back with the verbiage that's in here is on.
Sure, and I understand, but you lose the option to even discuss this one if you, if you let it die. I mean, if that's what you want it to do, if you just.
Okay.
Don't want, you want to go through with the second reading and just let it die, or you don't have enough to pass the second reading, then what you've got in front of you dies completely.
But tabling leaves options out there. You can come back to what's here or we can go a different route.
So my suggestion would be that you just table the second, any second reading of this particular ordinance. That, then if you want to bring it back for some reason, you, all you need to do is a motion to remove from the table and then vote on the second reading. If you decide you don't ever want to bring it back, we can deal with that by, either by a particular motion or just never addressing this particular ordinance again.
Okay, so let me ask it this way, then. Since we, we approved the first reading last time with the exact verbiage that's in there, we could come back and, let's say we change four thousand to just making stuff up five thousand.
Right.
That would have to restart over again, right?
Not necessarily. It's dependent upon what the issue, what the change is.
Okay.
So if it's a minor change that we can deal with in a second reading, then we wouldn't need to start over again.
Okay, so my second rationale for, again, my personal preference would be to let this die and start over again is, I don't know that it's fair, and, and, and quite honestly, most of, similar what you had, is from the feedback that I got, it's a little bit concerning to me, say, again, in a hypothetical, we had the first reading of an ordinance, changed the wording, the second reading comes back in August, whatever. I, I don't think that gives fair notice to people. So I'm not trying to draw stuff out.
I just want to make sure that you understand the implications of what you're doing.
I, I do, and that, well, through your help, I, I've gotten there. But, and then, yeah, that's just where I'm at, so if others want to table this, but I, I think, too, the, the concerns that were brought up, I still think there's a, there's a good case to be made for where this came from. If this doesn't, or if this accomplishes that but loops in too many other things, then it seems like that's the case, that, that's where we are. So I don't know, best path forward, probably creating a bunch of work, but I, I just would rather start fresh, giving everybody full notice, three readings, all that stuff for any of these changes, than tweak it going forward and.
That's up to you guys.
So letting it die essentially enables Rob's scenario that he just described, rather than tabling it and going back.
Correct, yeah.
I think that makes sense to let it die and then if we're all, we're all kind of confused about this and.
So just be a motion to approve the second reading and if you don't want it to go any further, then just let it die.
And to just give a plug for Ken, if anybody wants to come and give us advice, if you previously have referenced thirty years of work, I'll listen to you regardless of what you say.
So let's go ahead and move forward and ask for a motion to approve. And hearing none, it will die then. And we will move on to G, which is second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash six thousand, amending chapter one hundred and fifty-seven site plan. Well, Travis, what have you got to say?
So item G, for your consideration tonight, is three separate, or three amendments to chapter one fifty-seven for site plan ordinance. The first one amends section one fifty-seven oh-nine, the architectural standards, and adds several zoning districts, including primary structures in the R three, R four and CTS districts, as well as non-residential uses in the C one, R one, R one A, R two and R two A zoning districts. So essentially, it would include accessory structures in that separate zone districts. This brings those districts into your, it references your code section that allows or specifies acceptable materials dominated by permanency and strength materials. Essentially, it controls what can and can't be put on those buildings. The second amendment modifies the site plan requirements for one and two family residential dwellings and essentially references back to those, that the first amendment we're making. Your code does not require single and two-family dwelling site plans to be approved by council. And so that essentially gives your building inspectors and all those, and staff the ability to enforce that code section. And then the third amendment to fit one fifty-seven oh-nine is a cleanup item. There was a mistake when your code was last codified, where we flipped, or where two numbers got flipped that didn't make sense, where your maximum allowable illumination on a site plan was higher than the allowable average or lower than the allowable average, which is physically impossible. So we're rectifying that error right now.
So that's a lot. Does anybody have any questions?
I, I do. So this one seemed more, I mean, essentially, like I said last time, this is requiring for the older neighborhoods what covenants have functionally done for. But I am still worried about unintended consequences like we had from our last resolution. I, I know Ken, I don't put you in the spot, but you're more concerned with the first one. Do you have similar concerns with this one or?
I was concerned on the four thousand square foot.
Yeah, I, so a couple scenarios that I did want to talk through. So if, if we don't change the size requirement that he was concerned with, and I think others were concerned with, do, does this, what if somebody does have a, have a big lot, wants to build like a barn? I don't know that it's, i- is this going to require like smart side, the same stuff that are on house on a barn? That doesn't seem tenable.
So if it's in a, if it's in any of the R districts, yes. It would require them to meet the certain material requirements as defined by your code. But our, our thought is, is that the R district is intended to have a less agricultural, less, less industrial look or feel, whereas the vertical steel siding, some of the other types of siding would seem to fit better in the agricultural or industrial zone districts.
And again, if there is something super, in that scenario, that I, they could go to a board of adjustment for other, so, yeah, I guess.
I will say that I think one of the common requests we get is vertical steel siding in the commercial district. And I do think that us prohibiting that in the residential districts also makes sense so that when we get people that want to build in commercial districts, they don't point to residential districts, say we allow it there.
And we do now?
Yes.
Okay. Again, most of the covenants in the newer neighborhoods.
Sure.
Prohibited, but your point, I think, is we don't provide a resolution for that, so.
And that, your, your list of acceptable materials as well as not end-all, be-all, staff considers new materials, different materials, adjusted materials on commercial buildings all the time. So I think, I think staff would be willing to hear other materials as well that are not explicitly given in the code as examples. Because we know material is ever-changing.
Okay, let's move on then and ask for a motion and a second on twenty twenty-three dash six thousand.
Someone?
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Walters?
Yes.
DeVore?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And then G I, G one is the option to waive the third reading on this. Ask for a motion, please.
I think this kind of falls under the same thing that Rob said, it's no hurry on this. Let's go through the third, second, third reading, give more, more of the public chance to make a view of their, communicate their viewpoints if they want to and.
Motion from anyone else? Hearing none, motion fails. Moving on to eight, mayor proclamation. It's my pleasure to recognize the week of April thirty through May sixth, twenty twenty-three as Professional Municipal Clerks Week and further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk, Jenny Coffin, and to all professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. So thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
So we will move on to nine, reports in particulars, and we will begin with staff. Any staff reports?
Yeah, I have something to share real quick. A couple of weeks ago, Officer Iker and U Doris assisted the US Postal Inspectors on a narcotics investigation they were working on. And within that, U Doris was able to identify a package that they had suspected had drugs in it and got about three-quarters of a pound of it on the street. So it was a pretty big deal. But so I just want to give him a kudos and.
Three-quarters of a pound, is that what you said?
Uh, right around three-quarters of a pound.
Yep, that would kill like lots of people.
Yep. So I just want to share that with you guys. Thank you.
I think he's the gift that keeps on giving.
Yeah.
I mean, if you think about it.
Yeah, the last couple of years, we've gotten a lot of drugs out the street with and without that dog, so it's awesome, very beneficial.
Anybody else? Yes, Jason?
I want to recognize the efforts of two groups this past weekend in celebration of Earth Day. The Polk City Friends of the Parks held their second annual five K. It was far from ideal running conditions, but a lot of folks showed up and had fun nonetheless. So thank you to everybody that came and participated. And then also that same day, a few members of our park commission and other community members put together a trash bash cleanup along East Broadway. I got the honor of taking all of the trash away and it was a lot. So thank you to that group for, you know, beautifying a part of our town.
Agreed.
Thank you. And it has been noticed.
So then we'll move on to Chelsea, city manager.
Thank you.
How about council members?
One quick thing for me, as important as everything else was, based on the conversations that I've heard over the last couple of years, I want to call attention to consent. Item G, and any sort of approval for the Mexican restaurant is probably the most topical, most interested item. It is cool to hear that that's coming, so.
I'd just like to thank everybody for coming. It's refreshing to see people here taking an interest. Makes you feel good as a, as a representative to see that people are interested in what's going on here and I appreciate you being, thank you.
I just want to thank, you know, again, the people that take care of our community, from you guys planting trees for thirty-plus years to, you know, I saw the members of the Friends of the Park getting set up on Saturday morning when it was freezing cold and miserable and people standing on street corners helping direct the runners in the right direction. So, you know, and the pocket park that we're raising money for is going to be a really cool feature to add to our, our square. So yes, thank you to everyone that takes care of our community and helps plan for the
Okay, nobody else? I just have a couple of things. We had our city hall community center groundbreaking and it was very well-attended and a lot of fun. And it's just a giant step forward for us as a community. And I want to applaud everybody from the council and everybody else, staff who's involved in that, helping move that forward. I did have a sinking feeling today when I drove up, I didn't see the sign. I was afraid maybe it got picked up by somebody picking up stuff. So I'm hoping that it reappears somewhere. And then on the whole issue of trash pickup, I was invited by the Girl Scout Troop Eight Seventy-Three to join them last week to pick up some trash out at the spillway and down below. And, and they really put in a lot of hard work picking up trash out there. We're happy to join anybody who picks up trash basically anywhere around our community. So kudos to them and there's always more places to pick up trash, right, Jason?
Right.
So that's it for me and I will now ask for a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. We are adjourned until May eighth. Thank you, everybody.